Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Meeting for the City of International Falls for Monday, May 7, 2018. I would ask all present to please arise in pledge allegiance to the flag.
In pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would ask the Administrator to note the roll call with all members of the council present. Move to the agenda. We have several additions to the agenda. The first is under the consent agenda and that's the necessary expenses for four firefighters to attend a engine company operation in Duluth. We also have to the claims, two additional items. One, the city attorney's monthly claim for April and that the second that the city attorney, the city administrator be approved to pay the property taxes for property in Lake of the Woods County that the city has purchased. So those are the changes that would be added to the agenda. The council's pleasure with the agenda and the additions.
I would make the motion to accept the...
Motion by Counselor Droba to approve the agenda with the additions. Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the agenda. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
No vote. Yes, motion is carried. Agenda is approved with those additions. Thank you. Move to the minutes of the Monday, April 16 regular city council meeting.
To approve, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the minutes. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 Yes, motion is carried. Minutes are approved. Thank you. Move to the payment of claims and the accounts payable. We have, first of all, a transfer to the fund number 101, the general fund from the lodging tax fund number 812, $362.61. Accounts payable claims, City of International Falls regular claims of $245,045.76. Airport commission claims of $118,079.58. City Administrator, can you give me the city attorney's claim that we would also be approving?
I don't have the exact... I'll get it.
It seemed to me all right. Also, we'll be adding to the claims then the first half of the taxes for the Miggins property that the city purchased in Lake of the Woods County for the purpose of use for mitigating wetlands. And so the property taxes for 2017 payable in 2018 are $438 for that first half. Now, that is being challenged and the Department of Revenue will be giving us a ruling on whether or not as a city we have to pay those taxes. So it could still come down that we may not have to pay that $438, but best to authorize it and not be...
I believe that's for the year. $38 is for the year.
Check with the city administrator. Is it $438 the first half or the year?
The entire year.
For the entire year. Thank you. So we're just going to pay the first half?
That's correct.
About $219?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Obviously not assessed at what we paid for it.
$1,721 and no cents.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
With that addition of the city attorney's invoice and 50 percent of the property taxes, make a motion that we approve the claims.
One second. We have a motion by Counselor Jacksaw, second by Counselor Droba to adopt the resolution approving the transfers and the payments of claims and accounts payable. And that includes the April payment for the city attorney's services and the first half taxes on the property in Lake of the Woods County. With that, further discussion on the motion or the resolution. Hearing none, chair would call the claim. They call a question?
Aye.
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 No vote, yes. Motion is carried and the resolution is adopted and the approval for the payment of claims and transfer is accepted. Thank you. Go to the audience and is there any one in the audience that wishes to speak to the council? Dan McCarthy?
Yes. It's not on the agenda here, but I noticed on the board in an earlier meeting in the budget, there is some discussion about the Donahue property here. And I'd like to know because I wasn't aware of what was going on here from inception on this, but what is the current status, if I can listen from the attorney's standpoint, of that particular property? And what are we, as the City of International Falls, commemorating here by considering the use of taxpayer money here to make monuments to, I don't know what we're monumenting? I appreciate your comment.
Thank you. Turn to the city attorney. You probably have been working with it most closely. We do have a contract that was entered into by previous city council and it has some requirements that, with regard to the property. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that's correct. When the transaction was approved by the prior council, in exchange for receiving the property, there were certain obligations, you know, one of which would be a monument to show the transfer of this property to the city and also a hiking trail and some other things. And so what we are in the process of doing is working with the Donahue family and a trust they created to satisfy the city's obligations with regard...
Satisfy what?
The city's obligations. There were some monies that were paid over the years. That's all done. The monies have been paid, but the other items, there's been a roughed-in trail out there that's been put in, but the monument and an area to park, those things have not been done. So we're, we are working to complete that.
But Pat Donahue, to the best of my knowledge, was never involved in the city administration here. As to the best of my knowledge, without looking at the documentation and the history, he primarily was involved with Kuching Economy.
Well, and Pat Donahue individually is not a part of it. It's the Donahue family and his children and spouse that have owned the property at the time it was transferred to the city. So, and the monument, I mean, it's still a work in progress, but it doesn't, I don't believe, deal with Pat Donahue. It's the entire family.
I'm trying to give some clarity on that. What are we monumenting?
Essentially...
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Counselor Droba, please.
Essentially, the monument that is being asked to be erected on the property states that this was the Donahue farm. That's what the memorial is. This was the Donahue farm. It's not a specific person, but monumenting the place. That's what it is.
And the city is going to pay for that monument?
Contractually obligated to pay for that monument, yes.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you. Further from the audience, anyone that wishes to approach the council at this time? Not there be another opportunity at the end of the meeting? Thank you. We go to the consent agenda. We have four items under the consent agenda. Approve the necessary expenses for administrative staff to attend the Municipal Clerks and Finance Officer Association training in Rainier. Approve necessary expenses for the administrative staff to attend the Minnesota User Group Meeting for Civic Systems LLC. That's financial software and that's in St. Cloud. Item three is to approve necessary expenses for administrative staff to attend the Infrastructure Finance Basics Workshop Wednesday in St. Cloud. And then the additional item that was added, and that's to prove the necessary expenses for four firefighters to attend the engine company operations in Duluth, Minnesota. Your pleasure with the consent agenda?
Aye.
Motion by Counselor Pearson to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Consent agenda is not debatable since so... Question?
Aye.
Aye.
No vote, yes. Motion is carried. Consent agenda is approved. Thank you. Move to new business. Update on Voyager's National Park and the authorization of the use of amphitheater for the Voyager's National Park commemorative coin unveiling. The closure would be at the Pat Roach Landing, closing the Pat Roach Landing area on June 14th and 15th. It's my pleasure to welcome Superintendent Bob DeGrosse and Tanya Shuie of the park staff to come up and give us a presentation on what's going to happen on those two days.
First and foremost, let me thank you for having our item on the agenda. And what we are doing is in June, it's going to be the unveiling of the Voyager's National Park, America the Beautiful Quarter. This is actually a mock-up of it here. It's a loon swimming in front of a rock cliff, Anderson Bay or Grassy Bay. And so this event is going to be taking place in cooperation or actually primarily led by the U.S. Mint. And the event is going to be on June 13th, a portion of it down in the Cabotogoma Community Center in the, in the community of Cabotogoma. And then on June 14th is the primary event and it will be on the grounds at the Irvin Anderson Amphitheater at, or we're hoping to have it on the grounds at the Irvin Anderson Amphitheater at the Voyager's National Park Headquarters, which of course is city property and things. The event will be starting, if I'm not mistaken, at 11 o'clock and there'll be a variety of different things that will be going on through the day. From working very closely with the Mint, we're actually anticipating about 400 to 600 people possibly attending this event because there's a number of people who are coin enthusiasts that follow these events around the country and things. So we're primarily here to ask to use that property, the Irvin Anderson Amphitheater at the headquarters. And I am here with Tanya Shuie, our Chief of Interpretation, who can provide more details about the day specifically.
I think you... 11 o'clock and it does go till 1:30. So the dedication ceremony by the U.S. Mint is from 11 to 11:30. And then True Star Federal Credit Union has agreed to be the exchange bank that will actually, people will be able to purchase the quarters and they'll be there on the grounds, doing that from about 11:30 to 1:30. And during that time from 11:30 to 1:30, the park, each enforcement, interpretation, resource will have things for the public to do and see, kind of watch the film and things like that, as well as being able to purchase the coin. Pay at the event to be over roughly about 1:30 in the afternoon.
In connection with this, we will, well, we're hoping to get permission to go ahead and utilize the boat, the boat launch area in adjacent, that's adjacent to the Irvin Anderson Amphitheater for parking needs that we would have and everything. And of course, we recognize that June 14th is during the fishing season and everything, but the event is during the middle of the week rather than on a weekend and things.
Yeah, we'd actually like to request if it could be blocked off 24 hours in advance. We certainly wouldn't want a boat or a trailer parked there when we need to reserve some areas for VIPs. We've got not only the U.S. Mint, Director of the United States Mint coming, but we've also put out rights to the senators and the governor as well. And so we'd like to block off that area for the VIPs if that's possible. Not within our jurisdiction, so we want to request that as well. I have a few more requests if I can continue. We'd also like to know if the city can provide garbage use during that time, provide the cans and then the maintenance of the garbage. We're not offering or having anybody offer food during that time. We shouldn't anticipate too much garbage, just whatever people are accumulating or needing that day. We also will be having the headquarters building open. We'll be giving tours in there and then there's a facility in there for restrooms to use. And so we would like to know if the city could maintain that restroom throughout that time. If we've got four to 600 people coming, we are getting porta-potties on site and providing that, but we also anticipate people using restrooms inside and we would like to know if the city could maintain those as well. And then the last bestest one, bestest is, I don't think that's a good word, is there's an awful lot of goose droppings on the grounds that we just can't, don't know what to do about. And we're wondering if the city has any recommendations on how to clean that up before the event or...
Astroturf?
It's a plethora of goose droppings.
We have tools of the city to...
I would think that they have that.
It would be wonderful.
And are the quarters for sale for a quarter?
Yes.
Can actually get up to $10 worth or two rolls of quarters. Two rolls, right?
Two rolls, yeah.
Yeah. Twenty.
$10 a roll.
In a roll, yeah. $20 worth. And then youth 18 and younger will each get a quarter for free.
In a commemorative little black case as well that says U.S. Mint on the outside.
Exciting, very exciting.
Very exciting, yes.
Yes.
Makes you feel proud, actually.
Yeah, it's pretty...
We do have some flyers here that I'd like to give to you, council members, and we have extras for the audience as well.
Thank you.
How many places in the United States have their own coin?
Right now, each of the states, 50, each of the 50 states has their own coin and 41 out of a total of 56 park units have a coin. And so we're the 48th coin, if I'm not mistaken, that has been released. And so after us, there's about seven more, eight more that are going to be released from now until 2000...
They'll be done in 2019 and then one in 2020.
Yeah.
We'll have to take some to Silicon Valley when I go there next month.
All right, we have the request from the Voyager's National Park to secure the amphitheater property 24 hours in advance of the June 15 use of the amphitheater for the unveiling and sale of the quarters from the U.S. Mint, provide garbage service, maintain headquarters, bathroom facilities, and clean up, or figure out how to clean up the goose droppings. I'm not sure, I know exactly how we're going to do that yet, but we'll get that, get that taken care of. And so council's pleasure with those requests.
I would move on the request.
Motion by Counselor Briggs.
Happy to second.
And second by Counselor Jacksaw. City Administrator, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I do just want to clarify one thing on the agenda. I had June 14 and June 15. Our intent is on June 14, our intent was to close the boat launch landing area the day before as they indicated. So I think the appropriate dates would be June 14 and June 15.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for that clarification. So we need to, that would be 24 hours in advance of the 14th that we would close that so that we don't, if we do need to have parking there by dignitaries, that that's possible. All right, we have a motion by Counselor Briggs and a second by Counselor Jacksaw to approve the use of that facility and those items that would help to prepare. Sounds like you did a great job in preparing us. I think that it is going to be an exciting time to be able to secure those quarters. This will be, this will be the first that those quarters will be available to the public and as you said, there'll be some folks who travel the country to see new quarters that are put forth.
Yeah. Yeah, it should be a good day and hopefully the weather is like it is today and it will be a spectacular day then. But, and of course, I hope all of you are able to attend if you're in town and things. And I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for attending a recent State of the Park event that we had last week. I appreciate that. And thank you for your time today.
Thank you. I think the State of the Park was very well presented, some of the accomplishments of 2017 and plans for 2018. It was very, very worthwhile. You did a great job of presenting that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions or discussion? All the question on the motion then?
Aye.
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 No vote, yes. Motion is carried and approval is given with all of those items to be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two is to authorize the preparation and signature on the letter of support for the submittal of the Blandin Broadband Community Application to the Blandin Foundation. City Administrator, you've been involved with that?
Just thinking, Mayor. The, there's a group of people that have been working earnestly to try and move forward in becoming one of four participating communities with the Blandin Foundation to try and generate a foundation for expanding broadband generally and also just the connectivity. Right now, the Blandin Foundation is anticipating as many as 12 communities or areas that might be applying for their assistance. It's essentially a two-year program where they provide technical assistance and some financial resources to help plan and provide a basis for expanding high-five connection and broadband services in an area. At the present time, the group that's being led by two representatives of small-town tech that want to try and help orchestrate this particular event, there's a number of stakeholders that attended a meeting on April 19th. Presentation from a representative that works as a consultant to the Blandin Foundation, Bill Coleman, was here and talked a little bit about the program. Heartpoint presentation. And in order to move forward with an application, which I believe is due, I'd like to get as many letters of support as possible from various stakeholders in order... Right now, the preliminary plan is to have the Kuching Economic Development Authority serve as the fiscal agent for this particular, maybe use the Voyage Forward umbrella to try and help move it, move this effort forward and try and do it on essentially a countywide basis with some of the Lake Cabotogoma area, which is also part of the Voyage Forward as the area that could potentially be impacted with this initiative. And so they need letters of support and so I think we're asking today, I don't have a lot of support materials yet. They have another meeting that they're trying to schedule here very soon to, and then finalize the application. So I think they're asking that the City of International Falls as well as other organizations in the country offer a letter of support for the Blandin Foundation application. Ultimately, I believe the funding is, there's a maximum of about $75,000 to help with those five or six projects. Those aren't defined and won't be defined yet until we go through this two-year process with the various stakeholders.
Thank you, City Administrator. Council's pleasure then with that authorizing the preparation and signatures of a letter of support.
Make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw.
One second.
Second by Counselor Droba. Discussion on the motion or the letter.
I just have a question. When's the next meeting? Having lost my calendar.
It's still to be determined on availability, but they're looking at May 8th, 9th, 10th or the 11th. And the first meeting was in the library and they're trying to set up a second meeting sometime this week in the same location.
I'd like to be on that.
Please, Counselor Droba.
On Friday, I was asked to be a member of the exploratory committee for this project. So as soon as I get the date, I will definitely get it to you, Counselor Jacksaw. I think they did set a date though.
I was supposed to be there at a conflict for the first meeting.
I know that they were trying to send a doodle poll out to see how many people could attend sometime the second week. I don't, I attended the first meeting. I don't know that I...
No, they have not set that second date yet. You're correct. I thought they had.
I would attend as a representative for the city's franchise for the KCCTV, our television, and it would impact our communications at the city level on the website there. So there's a benefit to us.
Okay, the question before the council then, we're having a motion and a second to authorize preparation of the letter for submittal to the Blandin Foundation. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 No vote, yes. Motion is carried and authorization and signatures are approved. Thank you. Item number three, under new business, mayoral appointments to the Special Police Department Fund Committee. And in your packet you have that, but ask the two members of the Human Resource Committee, Counselor Brian Briggs and Counselor Cynthia Jacksaw to serve, and police officers that were elected by their membership, Captain Tom Lynch and Patrol Officer Justin Franz. And the citizen of International Falls to serve on that Special Police Committee is Ms. Nancy Roganrod. Could I ask your approval of those appointments?
Aye.
Motion by Counselor Pearson?
Second.
Second by Counselor Droba? Question?
Congratulations, you see it, HR Committee.
Thank you. Been working with Brian.
Further discussion? Question?
Epstein?
Aye.
Aye.
Epstein.
I would vote yes. Appointments are approved by the council. Thank you. With two abstentions. Item number four is to consider applications to the Charter Commission. City Administrator, I know that the letter, packet has three names, but you have received additional applications?
Counselor, the, that's correct. We, applications for, one would be for Holden, third for Cynthia Jacksaw. Two others are received today. I can distribute those. We can off my game here today. Did you pass them on? So, I'll pass these out. And one was received on Friday, and the other was received today, actually. And so, historically, when we've had vacancies on the charter commission, advertised for interested persons, which we did this year, we received no applications. We closed those applications back in February. And we've tried to hold a couple of meetings on the charter commission. We haven't been able to have a quorum. And at each of those meetings, we wanted to consider recommendations being brought forth to the district judge, and the judge makes the appointments to the charter commission. Interestingly, we received some applications, as I said last week. We had three people moving forward. We received one on Friday after your packet went out, and then another one today. So, now we have five persons that would be available to serve on three vacancies on the charter commission. Again, from a historical perspective, the charter commission has made recommendations to the district judge, and then the judge goes forward and makes the appointments for the respective terms. The city attorneys had a couple of conversations with the district judge, and in those conversations, the record was unclear as to the appointments for the terms from 2017 through 2020. And those are included in the memo later on. So, in the city attorney's research, he saw that the charter commission can make recommendations, I'm sorry. Yes, the charter commission can make recommendations to the district. You may also do that. So, in the interest of time, the city attorney was suggesting that applications to fill the, the five applications to consider the three vacancies, as well as a recommendation to move forward with the other persons in this memorandum, if the council chooses.
Thank you, City Administrator. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, I would agree with everything that the city administrator has said. The cover sheet of the memo does have a misstatement on it, and I would, we should correct that down in their background. It says the city council can appoint members of charter commission. That's really not true. City council can request or make recommendations to the chief district court judge that he appoints somebody, but the appointments themselves come from the judge. But either the city council or the charter commission can make the recommendations. And since we haven't been able to get a quorum of the charter commission for the last several meetings, we thought it would be facilitate matters if the city council did it. And the district court had put this on the agenda. We actually appeared in court last week and indicated to Judge Ben Shuf from Bemidji, who's the chief judge of the district, that we would be taking action tonight at the city council meeting, and that I would forward a proposed order for him tomorrow requesting appointment of certain individuals. And he's not required to follow the recommendations, but they always have in the past. And I have no reason to believe he wouldn't appoint whoever the city council recommends.
All right. You've heard from the city administrat-- oh, excuse me.
On this subject matter here, my understanding that this district, this digital district is administered primarily from Bemidji. So, we're talking generics here now. So, apparently, something is coming up either with respect to potential retirement or election I'm wondering if the city attorney could explain here with the number of judges that were within this particular district here, what the charter commission is recommending for, is it the seat here within this particular subdivision of the eight district, or how is that organized?
No, this has nothing to do with the judges. By law, if you have a charter commission, it's the chief judge of the district that the city's located in that makes those appointments. These are appointments to the charter commission. These will be citizens of International Falls. The city council will recommend. The charter commission consists of 15 members, and right now, we're down to 12. And so, I'm hoping that the city council will take action tonight to recommend three additional names, two, Judge Ben Shuf, and then he would appoint those. So, then, if we have 15 people on the commission, it'll be much easier to get a quorum for our meetings, which has been an issue lately. But it's got, it's got nothing to do with the judges in the district.
Okay. Well, with that being the case, then, I believe it might be helpful to the voting public to let us know who is on the commission at this point in time here and have it published, so somebody can make a recommendation or an application here. Who's there? Right now, personally, I'm ignorant of who is even on the charter commission. I know I can find out here, but the charter commission is what I think that it possibly is. It's very, very important here as far as the operation and conduct of the commission.
Well, I would agree that the charter commission is certainly important and significant, and that's why it's important that we get additional members appointed.
But who are, who's on it presently? Why is it not available?
Well--
I think it's on the website.
I think it probably is on the website. I'm not--
Well, in Kuching County, everybody doesn't go to the bureau.
Well, I can-- Mr. Mayor, do you want me to read who's currently on the commission?
Certainly, yes. The chair is Fire Chief Adam Anassa, has been serving. He was elected chair by the, by the members of the commission.
I've got, I've got a list. And the current members are Mayor Anderson, Clinton Chase, Gary Davison, Arthur Holt, Kelly Myers, Robert Walls, Michael Megabauer, Tom Smythe, Joe Schwartz, Jason Schobloom, Michael Tureen, and Adam Anassa. And Adam Anassa, who's here, is the chairperson of that. And we, the people being replaced are Jerry Jensen, who's moved out of the community, the former fire chief, Paul Eklund, former council member, and Tom Kayler. Those three positions need to be filled, and that's what the council would be doing.
And City Administrator explained earlier that the city has advertised on several occasions to secure persons interested. I said--
I just have a question.
Please, point of order?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the question I have is, reading the paperwork we have, it shows the three people that are two, that applied, plus the two new people, which are Ramona Johnson and Roger Jackson, correct?
Correct.
What is Kelly Meyer and Jason Schobloom? I don't understand. They filled a position for someone who were vacated. Is that correct? So, they are, they are good standing members that are not, not coming up? Okay, that was--
They are not coming up, but, but I think what has occurred, and we've searched the paperwork, and it appears that the charter commission, who has typically, I think this is the first time that I'm aware of, that the city council has made these recommendations. Typically, it's been the charter commission which has made the recommendations. And I think they made recommendations for these people to serve through 2020, but it was never submitted for approval to the judge. So, we could not, there's no order from the judge. So, in addition to the three new people, we're also going to be asking the district court judge to approve the names that have been serving for a period of time, but it's never been official.
Okay, thank you. That was where I was confused on the paperwork. I appreciate that.
That could be an issue if they had passed something.
Well, the, the good news is, they haven't taken any formal action in the last couple of years, so.
And I guess primarily, and Chief, you can certainly chime in here if you'd like. The charter commission has met regularly as required and has been reviewing the charter and does have a number of recommendations to change the charter, which will be forthcoming to the city council, which is one of the ways that the charter can be changed. Both the charter commission and the city council agree, and I believe it has to be unanimous by the city council, otherwise it has to go to a vote of the citizens. So, I think that there will be, you know, once we have a meeting this year of the charter commission, there, there will be some information coming to the city council for consideration.
I would agree with the mayor that they have met regularly. They've done a lot of work. It hasn't been formalized or approved by presentation to the council, but it's in the process. And, and I think that there are a number of changes that are being recommended.
I don't want to try to lead anybody in any direction here, but we have five names. If you review the names, you'll see that all those serving are males. I don't know if you would want to consider any diversity by appointing three females to the position. I mean, that's something for consideration. Otherwise, the chair is open to making a recommendation. I don't know, City Attorney, if, given that you've already spoke to the chief judge, if he's expecting something from you, if we were to punt this to the charter commission, the five names, for them to consider. If the council didn't want to get into it, making a recommendation tonight, I would ask your thoughts on that.
I represented to the judge that I would get him something tomorrow because we've, the last, at least two scheduled meetings of the commission, no action's been able to be taken because of lack of a quorum. And I think Administrator Anderson and myself just felt that if we waited for that again and we didn't have a quorum, we would just be that much further down the line. So, he doesn't know what names we're going to submit to him, but I would ask the council to take action tonight and select three names. And two, two of the names will just be serving until the end of this year, and one serving until 2020. And then, at the end of this year, there will be, I believe, eight that would be coming up for reappointment or replacement of some sort. And, you know, it could certainly, from that point forward, be back in the hands of the, of the charter commission. But I, I would feel like I had misled the judge if I don't get him some names tomorrow. Because we actually, we actually, I mean, we had, we had one hearing back in February where we said we were going to do this, and we then had a meeting scheduled. We didn't get a quorum, and, and so, I think that they are getting frustrated by our inaction.
For your integrity and maybe your license is on the--
My license would not be on the line, but my, my standing with Judge Ben Shuf may be, may be harmed if I don't get him something tomorrow.
All right. Council's pleasure here. Council Droba?
May I make a recommendation of two people for the one-year position? Or would you rather me do one at a time?
Open.
I would make a recommendation of Ramona Johnson and Roger Jackson for the one-year term.
So, you're making a motion that we recommend Ramona Johnson and Roger Jackson for a one-year term?
Correct.
All right. Is there a second to the motion? Second by Councilor Pearson.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
It's difficult to approve those two without knowing what the other third is, because I, I'm looking at some gender balance here, frankly. You know that when women are locked out of participating, they're also locked out of long-term participation in being leaders. It works that way. And so--
I can appreciate that. I'll tell you--
I have a hard time voting in isolation on two of the names.
I, I can tell you who I would be recommending for the next position if you--
I would like to know that, yeah.
It would be Crystal Clance.
Out of motion?
Nope.
They're already open?
Oh, gotcha. New thing. Got it.
Okay, further discussion on the motion to recommend to the chief judge for the charter commission?
I'm going to abstain because my name is offered, so I'm just not going to vote.
Fair enough. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Abstain.
I'll vote yes. Before yeses and one abstention, the motion carries, and two of the names that would be going to the chief judge would be Roger Jackson and Ramona Johnson. Chair is open for a third person.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I believe we have a two-year open term. Is that correct? I would make a recommendation of Crystal Clance for the two-year term due to her diligence of attending every meeting in our community and, and her knowledge of everything that's going on.
Second thought?
Okay. Motion by Councilor Droba, second by Councilor Pearson to submit the name of Crystal Clance to the chief judge for a two-year term on the International Falls Charter Commission.
Can I make a comment?
No.
Thank you for applying, Crystal. I have full-throated endorsement of having you on there. You'll be excellent.
Further discussion?
Aye.
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 I guess I'll abstain on this.
And I would vote yes. There being four yeses and one abstention, motion carries, and Crystal Clance will be recommended to chief judge for a two-year term on the charter commission. Thank you. Thank you, City Administrator and City Attorney. Please.
I believe-- Make the decision tomorrow. And cover memo to review upon it. Record doesn't show that previous--
So moved. I, I thought the charter commission chief had, had already moved that, and so--
It's, it's never gone to court in the form of an order, so I don't, I don't know if there's--
Was that in the December meeting?
I believe it was.
But the, but the letter never went forth to the chief judge. So, yeah, I think--
The charter commission's already acted on it. I, I could send two orders to the judge, one being the recommendation of the city council on these three, and one from the, you know, charter commission on the others for 2020. So, Chief, you just give me that in the morning and-- We, we need an order from the, from the judge, and if the charter, I think the only reason the city council is doing this action tonight is it wasn't done by the charter commission. I don't think the city council is intending to alter anything you've already done. So, if you've already done it in December, we just need to get the paperwork to the judge. Just get me something in the morning, and I'll include that to the judge.
We have the minutes that reflect that?
Not certain if it's the same as these, but I know that we do have those minutes.
So, maybe just to cover it, as the chief says, maybe we ought to have a motion to, if it hasn't been, yes--
I would move to confirm the charter commission's recommendations.
Motion by Councilor Droba to confirm the charter commission's recommendation for reappointment to the charter commission?
Second.
Second by Councilor Pearson. Discussion. Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried, and those reappointments will be submitted also on behalf of the city by the city attorney. Thank you. Move to item number five on the new business, and that's to approve the hire of part-time summer staff for 2018. Those names, Olivia Besch, Alexis Erickson, Dylan Holt, Chris Koscheck, and Casey Myers. Motion by Councilor Pearson to approve the hire of part-time summer staff. Second by Councilor Droba. Discussion on the motion or the appointment, or the hiring, excuse me. Discussion on the motion or the appointment, or the hiring, excuse me. There none question?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion is carried, and part-time summer staff hire is approved. Thank you. Item number six is to approve the 2018 fireworks license for Dollar Tree Store Number 3694. Motion by Counsel Jacksaw to approve that license, second by Counsel Pearson. Question on the motion or the license?
So...
Counsel Drowe.
So I believe in the state of Minnesota now, we're able to have stronger fireworks. Like, this is, is that not accurate? Didn't...
I don't believe that's passed yet.
It has not passed. If, okay.
I know that, I thought the league was opposed?
Opposed to it, absolutely.
And I think, I don't know where fire chiefs or those organizations stood.
If it did pass, the city could pass an ordinance to restrict it though.
Yes, they could. We could be more restrictive than the state law. That is correct.
However, if it does pass, they usually go into effect on July 1st if they already have a license. And I'm going to vote for this, that's not an issue, but if the state law changes on July 1st, how do we get any, how do we change our paperwork? How do we change our policies before that if we're already issuing out licenses?
Well, we can't discriminate. Everybody has license, some people have licenses depending upon when they come forward for renewal, so I don't...
I understand. I'm just saying, on July 1st, we may be in for, any way you look at it, anyone that has the legal right to sell fireworks.
City Attorney.
When we issue this license, their license is going to be to sell fireworks in the city of International Falls according to whatever law is applicable. And if we have a more stringent law than the state, they'd have to comply with what our stricter requirements are. So, I mean, by approving this license, we're not going to be letting them to do something beyond what would otherwise be allowed, so. And you'd have, I mean, you'd have the month of June to try to come up with something...
Liquor law last year.
Yeah.
So like the Sunday liquor law, we got into special session of land use and legislation to change the liquor law for Sunday, so.
We'd be proactive about this and set up a restriction even though the state hasn't acted or may not ever act, but...
I think we wait to see what the session closes, and then I think, you know, if we're looking to do something different from the state law, I think we would need to at least have a public hearing of some type so that businesses know what they're going to be allowed to do. Yeah, we have several meetings in June, we also have one on July 2nd, so there is time to do some things, but at the same time, I think we need to give businesses an opportunity to weigh in on that.
Just wanted to have some debate about that.
Who's for this down in the state legislature?
I don't have names exactly. I want to control certain things.
Driven by a need for revenue at the state level, that's the major thrust behind this?
That was my argument.
Dwayne.
I did a story on this about a month ago.
How much money are they losing?
Millions.
That's not a lot, really, in the scheme of things.
It is one...
They don't get tax revenue from that.
Sure they do.
Oh, do they?
The city of International Falls is... Give you more headshots, huh?
I mean, the state loses revenue, but if the city has a sales tax, then they would lose revenue, but...
Further discussion?
I'd just like... Fireworks, my birthday is July 4th. They celebrate for me.
Alan, I think Dwayne makes a good point, there's a lot of fireworks coming into the state already, and so that's why I think some of it is driven that folks are using these fireworks. Why not?
Well, this is where I'm at. If you up the risk to children of being maimed terribly by increasing the amount of fireworks, I guess I would side with the reducing that risk where children are concerned. So that's where I come from on this, but...
I think the Minnesota fireworks law right now does not allow anything that goes into the air. I think it has to be ground, and what was the other term?
Ends explodes.
Ends explodes, okay.
And besides that, if you allow that, then are city events where we use fireworks? And one of the things about the Fourth of July that's special is that it brings community together to celebrate our common wealth and our common locale and our common...
And my birthday.
And your birthday. But, and so if you can get fireworks anywhere, then that negatively impacts the city event.
I understand what you're saying. I don't think it's too reject.
Well, I should go down to the state legislature and tell them why it's bad.
All right.
Fireworks are legal, they're sold there in the state of Minnesota. Some of these things, the fireworks, I have no idea. They can be sold there.
Yeah, I don't want to, I guess, create names because there's a...
Fireworks wouldn't be legal. Only potential, I'm trying to do as good as I understand what is legal and what is not legal.
All right, we have a motion by Counsel Jacksaw and second by Counsel Pearson to approve the fireworks license for Dollar Tree Store 3694. Chair would call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, license is approved. Thank you. Item number seven under new business is a resolution to approve the payment of the contract fees to Borderland Humane Society and accept payment from them to satisfy the outstanding loan agreement for the building construction of the facility that the city owns for keeping animals. Budget Committee recommendation?
The Budget and Finance Committee met earlier this afternoon, and we are happy to accept the payment and pay off, have them pay off the building and satisfy the debt. So I would move this forward.
And motion by Counsel Drowe, and that would include the payment of the contract fees to the Borderland Humane Society of four years at $5,000, so that's a $20,000 payment, and we would accept payment from them for the outstanding loan agreement for $30,000.
That is correct.
Okay. Motion by Counsel Drowe, second.
Second.
Second by Counsel Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the resolution?
Glad we're resolving this finally.
Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, and payments and acceptance of agreements will be approved. Thank you. Item number eight is to approve the sponsorship and use of Smokey Bear Park for the National Night Out and Yard Games sponsored by the Police Department, area law enforcement agencies, and the Community Wellness Action Council on August 7, 2018, from 4:00 to 7:00. City Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The police chief had prepared a memo for the council's consideration requesting, as you pointed out, the use of Smokey Bear Park for the National Night Out events, and he's expecting all the law enforcement agencies in the area to participate. Community events that brings police and neighbors together under positive circumstances and builds up other law enforcement agencies around the country to host block parties and festivals and other parades, and we're going to do that with our emergency personnel and have yard game events that are sponsored by both the Police Department and other law enforcement agencies as well as the Community Wellness Action Council on that date. It's the first Tuesday in August, August 7th, from the hours of 4:00 to 7:00.
Counsel's pleasure with that. Motion by Counsel Drowe to approve the use of Smokey Bear Park, second by Counsel Pearson. Last year was a very good event, it was a wonderful evening. Thank you to the newspaper for the coverage of that last year. I think there was a nice crowd last year. I expect if the weather's good, we'll even have a larger one this year. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, and approval is given for use of the park. Item number nine is council information that's in the packet received from the Koochin County Land and Forestry Department, where we received $8,730.41 and also $25,442.23 from tax forfeit land sales and from timber sales in Koochin County. For a total of $34,000... So that's just information. I would suggest a letter of thank you to Land Commissioner Hyville for their efforts there. I think, I don't know if that's more money we've received in the last few years, but it certainly is welcome. Motion would be in order to send a letter of thank you.
So moved.
Motion by Counsel Drowe.
Second.
Second by Counsel Pearson. Discussion. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, a letter of thank you will be sent. Thank you. Any other business to come before the council under new business? If not, we will go to the reports of the administrator.
Mr. Mayor, council, just a few reminders. One for the public, on Wednesday, May 9th, the county assessor's office is going to be having their open book session between 9:00 and noon. Residents in the city of International Falls can present any questions that they may have about the valuation of their property to the county assessor. It will be necessary to do that if you wanted to appeal your assessment to the Board of Equalization, which is a meeting that the county board has on Tuesday, so it's necessary to do that. I just wanted to remind the public that that opportunity exists for them to do that on Wednesday from 9:00 to noon. Secondly, we had some conversation earlier today about the Charter Commission, and the next Charter Commission meeting is scheduled for 5:00 PM on Tuesday, May 15th. Hopefully, we'll have that meeting and we'll have a quorum, and potentially, we can have the new members sitting in office so that they can participate in that meeting. Be determined upon when the judge actually makes the appointment, and we receive... I've had some general conversations and email correspondence with the Brian Larson of the Minnesota Department of Transportation, and they want to move forward and meet with the Visual Quality Committee, looks like on May 22nd, to have a conversation, follow-up after the last public information meeting we had. Question project is scheduled for 3:00 in 2020, so that's... We do have the police chief's report, and the police chief wasn't able to be here to draw the council's attention to that, and he's included some further detail to his typical two-page report that has some detail on cases for 88 cases that were created as a result of work which occurred over April of 2018. I provide a little bit more information for the council using our new ZERCA system that they've just recently went live with here back in March.
Incredibly impressive to be able to see what we've done case by case without names. This is very, very nice to see what they've been doing.
It's just a first blush of what we can do, and, you know, we want basic information, but I think there's lots of options with the ZERCA system here and other information. Or if you have questions, you can generate reports, you can talk with them individually if that's...
With Counsel Drowe, I think it's very helpful to see the range of issues that the police department is dealing with as well as those individual activities and realize damage to property, that there was four issues on that. That's just always interesting to know. Further from the city administrator? Thank you, and please thank Chief Maston for that report. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In addition to what we've previously discussed, I have acted on the request of the council and sent a letter requesting an opinion from the Attorney General with regard to the contingency fund, and hopefully, we'll get a response on that fairly soon and be able to recommend action.
Good. Thank you. Chief Manasseh.
Thank you, Mayor. Included for the packet, the monthly report for the fire and ambulance. Hate to say it out loud, but we had a pretty slow month. Month of April, we had three fire department calls, all of which were the last two days in April. All three were rural responses with a barn fire, propane tank venting, and a downed power line due to the wind. We didn't have any CO alarms or any investigative purposes for anything, so again, on the fire side, right up till the very bitter end, they're a very quiet month. Monthly fire meeting was on the 19th where we did our regular business. We trained on ladders, foam deductors, and ventilation. We had a very good training that night as far as a hands-on experience. I believe the firefighters really enjoyed that training, so we're going to try and emulate that some more. Ambulance for the month of April, we had 49 911 calls and 39 transfers for a total of 88 runs, and again, a little bit slower than we've seen in the months past and compared to last year of 106 runs. I can say in the last week here, we've been very busy, so it goes with ebbs and flows, so we're going to get busy again. Monthly meeting and training was on the 11th, again with a regular business meeting. Training involved 12 lead interpretation, ventilation, King Airways, and IOs. We did have, I'll include it now since it happened on Saturday, but we did have a very good pancake feed fundraising event at the fire hall on Saturday. Very happy with all... Very happy with all our sponsors, I guess in lack of a better term, and people that helped us out with that. It was a good event for the community, and we had a lot of people there and raised a nice amount of money. That's going to be put forth into the community in form of donations for other events throughout the community. That's how we've decided to distribute our money is through that fundraising event, and then also purchasing AEDs to place out in the community. And then we also do scholarships, two scholarships. So that fundraising event is very important for us and helps us achieve those goals. So again, very good day for us.
Thank you. Questions for Chief Manassa? Please, city administrator.
Thank you. I just want to make a point. I think... I don't know that I... I apologize for having a slow month in the fire department. I think that's a great thing, actually, and part of it goes to... It's a tribute to the fire department for the fire prevention activities that they've undertaken for a number of years, and I think that... ...activities can avoid having high service calls. For having a... With that, I would just ask the fire chief to maybe speak a little bit about the higher risk of fire right now, wildfire in particular with the dry conditions.
Yes, we do work very closely with the DNR, so we get... One of the things they distribute on a daily or at least every two days, they put out what they call their action plan. It's a very detailed report as to the weather forecast, the condition of the natural surroundings, so the grasses, the trees, talks about flame spread and what ignition ability is in relation to the relative humidity and dryness in the air. So we work very closely with them, and we follow their recommendations. So again, the city council installed a... Well, was part of anyway, the fire danger warning sign in front of Smokey the Bear, so that's what we keep up to tabs with is through the DNR. And as the administrator said, we went through a pretty good run of dry weather here the last couple of weeks, where fire dangers were very high, and we've been very lucky in our response area not to see too much come out of that. Koochin County as a whole, I know Little Fork's been busy, Big Falls, North Home, they all had a fire at pretty much the same time of day on Friday. So we had three of our county fire departments acting all at the same time in three different locations along with the help of the DNR. So again, knock on wood, we've been pretty lucky in our response area. We are starting to see a little bit of green up, so hopefully, soon, that fire risk will go down, but we are in a pretty critical time right now, so of course, care with burning permits and campfires and all that stuff. And I was notified that there should be a new DNR criteria list sent out today, so that's the burn card on what we allow and don't allow with burning permits in the issuance of permits. So I'm going to look for that when I get back to the hall today now. It should have came in the mail today. So what we urge people to do is keep an eye on the... DNR maintains their website and their fire danger index, so keep an eye on their website or contact a fire warden or the fire department for information.
Counsel Drowba.
With burning per... Or not burning permits, but like if someone has a little burn pit in their backyard, is that okay in this weather or no?
Currently, I believe it is. Again, I'll have to check the new card that came out today. As of up till today, that was okay. Campfires were permitted. Again, that's a day-to-day basis, so one of the other things you want to watch for is the weather forecast. They're very good about putting out what they call the red flag warnings, so those do trump any burning permits that are issued or anything that's on the normal informational card that goes out. So again, in a two-week period, campfires may be allowed, but it could be a particular day might come up where the weather conditions change, and that voids that out, so very important to stay informed on that if you're having any kind of fire.
Further questions for the chief? Very good report, chief. Thank you. Thank you for your leadership with the community activity and the pancake feed and for all the volunteers that participated in that event also. Very well done.
Thank you, Mayor.
Move to reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. Counsel Drowba.
Earlier, we talked about the Blanden Community Foundation and the broadband. That meeting has been picked. It's going to be Wednesday, May 9th at 9:00 AM at the Public Library.
Very good. I have my written report. Only two items that I would just mention participated with the airport manager in a meeting with the Federal Aviation Administration and our consulting engineers from Short Elliott and Hendrickson on the rebuild of the runway, and the concern for having to shut down the airport when that project is being done at least one summer, we would have to be down for probably 60 days, possibly more. And so working with the FAA on attempting to possibly use the taxiway with some modifications to the present taxiway, using that as a runway for a period of several months during the day. So very important meeting, and pleased to participate in that. Secondly, would also let you know that SkyWest Airlines is adding two more flights in the weekly schedule, June 8th through September, for the summer schedule because of the forecasted demand. So that is also good news. With that...
On Tuesdays, Wednesdays morning, the additional flights.
There'll be two every day.
Presently, we're at 12 a week. Now we'll be to 14 for that period. All right. Further from council committees, boards, and commissions? If not, anyone else in the audience that wishes to bring something to the attention of the council? Next regular city council meeting is Monday, May 21st at 4:30.
I would like to say I won't be at the next meeting. I'll be at a funeral, so...
Very good. With that, hearing no further items to come before the council, we'll stand adjourned.